All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the forum for the PEA for the board member and board candidates and for the PEA members. I will begin by having the candidate introducing themselves to our members. And then we'll start off with questions. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer their questions. And after their two minutes is complete, we'll ask the same question to another, to the next candidate. The questions will start off with, question will start off with Sheila Jackson, who is a member of PEA and a community member of Plainfield, along with Laura Davis and Lynette Fraser. We can start off with Mr. Hazeem Gray, because he's the first person that I can see. So we'll start with Miss I'll call each person after the introduction. Okay? Let's begin. Go ahead, Hazeem, introduce yourself, please.
Hi, to all the PEA members out there. My name is Hazeem Gray. You may remember me from such theatrical productions as standing on business on behalf of all PEA members when it came to the budget. Because they were going to drastically reduce PEA members. I remember specifically twenty-six instructional coaches. And I stood up and said, no, because PEA members are essential to student achievement. And you are essential to the work fabric of the school district. So that's why I ardently supported PEA members during the budget. Because you all made sure my daughter was able to reach their full potential. So I wanted to make sure you all continue to do the good work that you did in the district. And show me your budget, I'll show you your priorities. The priority has to be on student achievement. And you all show up every day to make that possible.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Miss Embry?
Hi. My name is Pat Hembray. I am a retired teacher from Plainfield High School. I was there over thirty, thirty years. Loved it, it was amazing journey. I decided to run for reelection because after such an amazing journey, as a Plainfield High School teacher, history teacher, I wanted to be on the other side to make decisions and policies that will enhance our students, grow our students, develop our students to their greatest potential. And to make sure that everyone succeed, all our students succeed academically, socially, and psychologically. Those were the reasons I decided to be on the other side. It is, like I said, it's amazing journey. The things I want to accomplish, the things I have accomplished as a teacher, and the things I have accomplished as a board member. First, I know what students need. I know their voices, I listen to their voices, I listen to parents' voices, to my colleagues' voices. That is the reason I am here. As far as budget concerns, I am totally, totally, and for everything concerning the budget that enhance students, and that's the majority of the budget anyway. So budget cuts, no. I didn't vote for budget cuts, I would never. I want to enhance students, make them succeed, give them all the resources necessary. As a teacher, I receive them, as a board member, I will give them. Thank you.
You're welcome, Miss Embry. Next, we'll have Miss Alan Jordan.
Hi, my name is DeShawna Allen Jordan. I am a resident of Plainfield, New Jersey. I have been in Plainfield since nineteen seventy-three. I am a mother of four, a wife of thirty-five years. I have three granddaughters. I have been involved with the Board of Education behind the scenes since my children went in elementary school. Even when they finished school, I'm still involved with Plainfield Board of Education. I am the vice president of the Plainfield High School Booster Club. I have been at the vice president for the past seven years. I have been behind the scene with the basketball program at Plainfield High School, as well as anything that they need with the children, with sports, as well as the band. I'm there for them. And that's an introduction on myself.
Thank you so much, Miss Jordan, Alan.
Alan Jordan, yes.
Jordan, thank you so much for saying Alan Jordan. And next we'll have Giselle. Can you say your last name for me is Fuentes? Fuentes?
Giselle Fuentes.
Fuentes, please go ahead.
Hello, everyone, to the members of the PEA, teachers, everybody. I am Giselle Fuentes, a proud recent graduate of Plainfield Public Schools, PHS, Plainfield High School alumni. And I'm running for the Plainfield Board of Education because it is important to bring the Board of Education closer to the youth. I am part of Gen Z. I understand the struggles that we face as a school district. I recently graduated, I have walked the high school hallways, I have sat in the classrooms. I know our teachers, our incredible teachers, with our teachers. I don't know where I was gonna go, but yes. And I'm running because it is important for us to have real community engagement at the Board of Education. It is important to bring the board closer to the people, and that is what I intend to do. I'm also running because it is important, dear to my heart, we have eighty-five percent Hispanic and Latino population in our schools, but yet we don't have representation at the table. And it is important for us to have somebody at the table who understands and who have gone through the bilingual programs, who is there to make decisions when it needs. And I'm here for all the students, all of the faculty and staff, and the incredible administrators that we have, our staff, teachers, and everyone. That's what I'm running for, to continue the fight and to continue to support our students. Because students deserve to be supported as well, as well as our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Miss Robbie Campbell Lassada? I'm saying wrong, right? Can you say it for me, please?
It's French, it's Lassada.
Lassada.
That's okay.
Thank you.
A lot of folks pronounce it wrong, okay. My name is Robbie Campbell Lassada, and I am so proud to be here tonight to meet you all and to engage in a thoughtful conversation about why student success is important. I've been in this community for about seventeen years, I have two children. One of them recently graduated from the Plainfield Board of Education. He has autism, and I've been a champion for him since he was born. I'm also a member of the Plainfield CPAC, where I serve as treasurer and support many families in our communities who have children that are neurodivergent. I apologize, I came in late, so I'm thinking a lot of folks are answering the first, one of the first questions, why are you running for the board? Or introduction, okay, great. Thank you.
I'm sorry, since you're late, I apologize for that. What we're doing is we're just telling the introductions. Introducing why we're running, not why we're running for the board, just introducing ourselves to the community. The panelists is going to ask you questions about your intent and why you're running for the board.
Okay, because a lot of folks were answering that, so I wasn't quite sure, sorry about that. All right, so again, I'm a wife, a mother of two. I've been again in Plainfield for about sixteen years, and I support all of the students and teachers, and looking forward to engaging in supporting you as we go through this process and answer the questions. I am certainly a champion of students, champion of students in the neurodivergent community and typical students. I support students' achievement, whether they're going through post-secondary school, trade, or military, but I also support the whole child approach. And that's where you have worked with emotional intelligence, critical communication skills, and executive functioning skills. Because I do believe we need all of these skills to make sure our children survive in this world. So thank you so much for your time, and I look forward to engaging in conversations as we go through the night.
Thank you so much, Miss Robbie.
You're welcome.
So our first question is going to come from Sheila Jackson. Ms. Jackson, you can ask, start with whomever you feel you want to start your question off with. And if anybody else wishes to answer, they can just raise their hand, and then I'll call on you.
Okay, so this question is for Commissioner Gray. It says, why are you running for the board? And what is your passion for education?
So thank you so much for asking that question, so and thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to speak. So I'm running for the Plainfield Board of Education because I believe our children deserve schools that match their limitless potential. My campaign has been rooted, and always been rooted, in budget transparency, accountability, and participatory decision-making. Ensuring every dollar, every single red cent is invested in classrooms and not politics. My passion for education comes from being a father, growing up in a working-class background, graduating from two great public research universities, Temple and Rutgers, and also being a father and being active in my community, and being an advocate for my community, helps me understand what our schools need to improve, and how home values can rise by our school's improvement, and also how neighborhoods thrive and opportunities expands for every family when the Board of Education does well with a board that's non-conflicted.
Can I go next? Because he's touching on things that I like, is that okay, Ms. Sheila Jackson?
Yes, sure.
Okay, thank you so much. So I echo what Hazeem Gray says. I'm running because I believe the board needs individuals who are truly invested in our community, our students and our teachers. And with the current climate, the federal changes that are happening, and the funding cuts, I've seen firsthand how schools are being asked to do more with less. And my background, my background is strong in budgeting. Right now, I support a five-hundred-million-dollar budget at Rutgers University Newark campus, which is an HSI and an MSI institution. Why does that matter? It's a Hispanic-serving institution and a minority-serving institution. So we have students that are coming to our institution seeking support. But the Pell Grant now is no longer available, and many resources are eliminated because of the executive orders from the White House. So my role has been to take resources and to stretch them in ways we've never stretched them before, without sacrificing quality. So I want to take my experience as a budget builder, if you will, to support the whole child approach, which is what I spoke about earlier. This means making sure that resources go directly to the classroom, professional development, and programs that nurture critical thinking and emotional intelligence. Ultimately, I'm running to ensure that every decision we make, every decision we make, reflects what's best for our students and our teachers, and to make sure our teachers have the tools that they need to do their jobs well. Campaigning recently, I've talked to so many teachers who are struggling to make decisions in the classroom because they don't have support. Some teachers have said they actually quit the district because they didn't have support. I want to change that narrative. I want teachers to stay because we're giving them the tools they need. And that starts with building a budget that matters. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else would like to answer that question? Go ahead, Miss Embry.
I'm running for the board for specific reasons. Number one, to restore vocational and career education. When I first started playing for high school, we had welding, cosmetology, graphic arts, electronics, and so forth. But now, we don't have those things. Students have to have alternatives. Only thirty-three percent of the population in this country have college. First year of college, second year of college, college degree, masters, PhDs, thirty-three percent. Our students need alternatives, they just can't graduate, and then what? Some will go to college, some will not, but the trades have always benefited our population. The next thing, raise the graduation rate. Plainfield High School is a comprehensive school, it is in status. In order to come out of status, we have to raise the rate. CUSAC demands we raise the rate. So as a board member, what I'm doing, anything, any programs the superintendent recommends, I will approve them, I will vote in favor, in order to raise the graduation rate. The third thing, we just completed contract with PEA and the board. But there are some disgruntled employees because of the equity and salaries. You have a new hiring, which is not the hiring's fault, making more than a teacher, a secretary in the district with the same experience. So what I want to do is make sure everyone is on the same level. It's gonna take a minute to do that, but I am determined to have equity and salaries because I too understand, I was in the same shoes when I was in the district. Excuse me?
You have reached two minutes?
Oh, I, okay. All right.
Thank you, Miss Embry.
Hi.
Can I rebuttal to that statement if possible?
I'm sorry?
Can I rebuttal that statement in two minutes?
No.
You answered the question already, so that was good, I say. We're just giving our opinions, our statements, we're not really doing a debate because it's not a debate.
Good evening again. My name is DeShawna Allen Jordan again. I just want to say, why am I running for the Plainfield Board of Education? I would like to bridge the gap between families with the board. I was the PTO president for many years, and I feel that if we bridge the gap with the PTO, with all the families from each school, we have a, I would like to bring a group, or should I say, where all the PTO heads meet with one person, a liaison, with the board, so that we can bring all the ideas. I think that will bridge the gap with communications as well. When I was the president, we didn't have that, we didn't have access to the board. So I think if we bring that back, the parent-teacher organization at each school should talk with the teachers in each school and bring it back to the liaison for the board. I would love to build that gap. As my running mate said, bring back the vocational wing. When I was in the high school, we had home economics, we had hair, cosmetology, we had automotive. We had all these things that made it interesting to come into school. I think that would help our student population with our graduation rate as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Let's see. Anyone else would like to answer the question?
I'm sorry, could we pause for one moment? I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but I have to change your name.
Tamara Douglas.
Okay, I'm so sorry, Ms. Douglas, about the mix-up with the links. So I'm just gonna rename you. And welcome.
Oh, she's just running?
Thank you so much.
Yes, sorry, I apologize for being late, I had class today.
Oh, okay, thank you, Ms. Douglas. If you'd like, can you introduce yourself to everyone? And we have our cameras on, if you don't mind. Hi, Ms. Douglas, thank you so much for joining us. Would you like introducing yourself to us, please?
My name is Tamara Douglas. I'm a resident of Plainfield, New Jersey. I've worked in early childhood education for over twenty years. And we're here, and currently we're running for the Board of Education.
Thank you so much. So we have a question that's on the board right now, and the question is, why are you running for the school board, and what is your passion for education?
I'm running for the school board because I feel like there's some things that should be changed. Right now, I'm currently a teacher in Newark, and I kind of see the day-to-day of things that happen in the classroom with the teachers, the students, and the parents. And I know that there's things that can be put in place to help those things be changed. Like, for instance, we could have more communicate, open communication with the parents. The teachers can use more help in the classrooms, like we could have more student aides, more aides. And I just feel like, once we put those things in place, that education will come all the way across the board. And I'm passionate about teaching, I'm passionate about giving the children and the parents what they need. And that's why I'm running.
Okay, thank you so much. I think, Ms. Giselle, I think you're the only one who didn't answer the question?
So I'm a recent graduate of Plainfield Public Schools, and as the youngest member, as the members person running for the Board of Education, I understand the challenges students like me face in the school district. And that is one of the reasons why I am running for the Board of Education. I want to ensure that every student have access to modern programs, dual enrollment programs, so that they are able to get to the finish line in their high school careers, and better mental health resources, and real opportunities for success. I always say success is one of the most important things that a child can have and a student can have. But that is with the work of our, with the work collaboratively from the board, the administration, and our teacher. I believe for every student to serve an equitable, high-quality education, regardless of their background and where they came from. And that is what the things that I'm running for. I'm running because it is important as well to have somebody in the board that listens to the youth, that is part of the youth, that understands the challenges that we face as Gen Z. Because they might, other people might say that, oh, you guys are facing this challenge. But listen, we have somebody at the board that actually knows the challenges, and that it will be me. And I'm running because it is important for us to have a more collaborative approach in terms of board issues and better communication with our families and our community. And that is surely one of the things that I will be working on as a Board of Education Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next question will be from Laura Davis.
Good evening, everyone. My question for you is two parts. If the district had to make cuts, would you cut employee jobs? If not employee jobs, what would you cut instead? And I'm going to go in this order. I would like for Ms. Campbell Lassada? Did I say it wrong, too?
I was hoping you didn't call me, because my son is, okay, so no problem. So I just want to put it out, my son is autistic, and I'm proud of him. So he vocalizes, and you'll hear him in the background, but that's okay. All right, that's how he vocalizes, and I'm happy with that.
I'm gonna start with you, we're gonna go to
I'm just letting you know that there's no way he's gonna be.
Gray, Fuentes, and then Hembray.
So the question is budget cuts. So no. I would not cut our teachers and staff because they are the heartbeat of the school. Cutting jobs should be, always be the last resort. And so as an executive at Rutgers Newark, right now, we're experiencing a lot of challenges at our campus, and we are not thinking about cutting staff or faculty. Salaries and benefits are about sixty percent of the budget. Sixty percent. And we need those resources to continue to support our students. I first look at responsible solutions, like shared services. We're doing that right now, we're collaborating across campuses, Rutgers has four campuses. So now we're looking at collaborating across campus in shared resources. And that's something I will look at at the board. One of the things that I would take away, but I believe the board budget is, it was hard to navigate to see what it is. It looks like it was incremental budget, which means they look at last year's budget and add on to the next year. I would take that out. I would do zero-based budget, meaning we would take all of the expenses and look at them as a zero base, like we don't have these expenses, what do we really need, what don't we need? Who can we contract with that is different? How can we leverage our assets, our need, to get more bang for your buck, for lack of a better word? I would look for efficiencies in other areas as well, to support some of our critical needs. But teachers, no. Far too many times we've been walking with teachers, just saying, we don't have enough support in the classroom. We need help in our classroom. So that would not be, that would not be an area where I would go. Besides looking at efficiencies and looking at a zero-based budget, which is very important, zero base, starting from blank, what do you need? You would look at renegotiating contracts. We are at a pivotal moment right now in our Okay, thank you, thank you.
I supposed to go next, I'm sorry, I didn't hear your order, it was cut off.
Okay, it was supposed to be Douglas next, then Alan Jordan, then Gray, then Fuentes, and last would be Hembray.
Ms. Douglas? I'm sorry, I was writing. So as an educator, I understand how much we rely on every member of our school community, from teachers to custodians to paraprofessionals. Cutting staff should always be the last option because it directly impacts students' experiences. Instead, I would carefully review spending on contracts, consulting services, and outdated programs that don't share current needs. We should also look for grant funding and community partnerships before cutting people. The focus must remain on preserving instruction and student support. So if I had to make cuts, it would not be the teachers, but it would be at the top where the administrators are.
Thank you so much.
So I'll do it. I'm next. Okay, so if I had to cut, if the district had to make cuts, what would cut? Employee jobs. I would not cut our educators in support staff. They are the backbone of our district. They are the future, they teach our children. So and reducing personnel directly affects the quality of our instruction and student morale. I would start like my running mate said, with the administrative. Cut those salaries. Also, any programs that are overlapping, maybe we need to just look at the stuff that we have, if we're overlapping in things. Let's reduce it, let's go over with the fine-tooth comb in order to see what is double, what are we wasting on? More energy-efficient items, maybe cut cell phones, that's something that we can do as a district. Cut costs. Everybody, you know, everybody has a cellphone, why do we have, the district has to pay for one? Cut that, that's an expense, so let's cut out the little things. That's what I would do.
Next? I think it's Mr. Fuentes, that's who he says.
It should be Gray, then Fuentes, then Hembray.
So I believe all of the candidates had expressed things that I would do. I would kind of try to eliminate inefficiencies. I wouldn't cut essential staff to student achievement. So that's teachers, paraprofessionals, they're the foundation of student success, right? And I stood on business on the budget, and I made sure that they didn't get cut this go-around when a zero percent budget or a zero percent increase was being advocated by my fellow colleague on the board, Commissioner Hembray. So I would focus on also, and which I've been adamant about, is fighting for more funding. The student funding formula is broken, it's been broken for a very long time, and it needs to be fixed. And there's candidates running for governor, none of them are talking about urban education. Neither one of them are talking about fixing the funding formula. And then you had existing commissioners that were saying we had historic funding. There's no way we had historic funding. The student funding, the formula has been broken for a very long time, that needs to be fixed. We need to advocate for more funding. When it's a ten-million-dollar surplus on a state level, how are we then being asked to have a tax increase? Right, which never came through the Finance and Operations Committee, but I said that at the Legal Woman Voters forum. So I think we need to figure out creative solutions to funding, right? The Board of Education, there's a focus on entrepreneurial aspects of funding. So seeing if we could basically use our facilities, leverage our facilities in order to make sure we're leveraging fees in the right places, not balancing the budget on the backs of poor working-class and middle-class families, but we're balancing the budget in strategic ways, focusing on areas we can eliminate efficiencies, and focusing on areas we can draw more revenue in the district. So we're not balancing the budget on working-class and middle-class families.
Thank you. Well, I echo what my colleague said, but teachers are the backbone of this
Thank you. Well, I'll, I echo what my uh colleague said, but um teachers are the backbone of this school district. Whether that is faculty and support staff, paraprofessionals, they're the backbone. They're the ones who are there in the classrooms every single day. So that is a no. That that is a straight no on cutting uh staff. Uh especially our teachers and paraprofessionals. But let's make it clear. Cutting staff that includes teachers, that that directly affects us or the students. And I will say to what we need to cut is administrative costs. Administrative costs in the district has, are very high. And that is one of the things that we have to focus on, and that was one of the things that I will focus on. Contracts, unnecessary spending in contracts that do not serve the people, do not serve the students, do not serve the teachers. Those are the third thing I would like to cut. And before we ever, we consider cutting staff, we've most look at creative decisions and creative solutions like partnership and grants for programs and programming. Because teachers, again, are the backbone of this district. And that is a no to cutting teachers. And I hope that all the colleagues here that share the same sentiment do that when they get elected. Thank you.
Ms. Henry?
Yes, I would never cut staff, never. Staff support our students. I have when I was a a teacher in the Plainfield School System, I lived through cuts. Retain your staff, retain your staff to support your instructions, to support your s- your students. Build relationships, do what you have to do, but don't cut staff. There should be a budget review committee. On that budget review committee, I would be a part of that. To look at where to cut. Look at your long-range facilities plan. Your capital improvement plan. Look at your vendors. Look at your contracts that you, that where wasted money may be and and you may not need certain consultants. You may not need some of those vendors. You can always pause non-essential capital projects. You can consolidate underused programs. And you can always reduce administrative costs. The, that is the way, and we need transparency for everything we do with the budget. The budget we have, we did not have a budget review committee. We did not have parents partaking or participating and reviewing the budget. We have to have all stakeholders at the table. If we're going to engage in anything with the budget, looking at the budget, reviewing the budget. I did not vote for the tax increase. I'd rather a referendum where if there's a referendum, the state would pay forty percent of the cost. That's forty percent the district can save. Those are the alternatives we need to look f- forward.
You have reached two minutes.
Okay, um, Ms. Fraser, you're the, you're up.
Okay, the question I had was, um, many of our facilities are in need of repair and upgrade. And many of our buildings lack climate control, especially for hot weather. So what is your vision for the future of the facilities at Plainfield Public Schools?
Do you have an order in which you'd like them to answer?
I do not.
Okay, so we'll start off with uh Mr. Fuentes.
Well, I I I will say, out of anybody who is here, um, except our teachers, I have experienced this myself. Last year, I sat on a classroom in a very, very hot eighty-degree weather. And it is not nice sitting there, you're the whole entire period and the whole day. And I know that many of our buildings are outdated. That includes Plainfield High School specifically, where I uh attended. I will advocate for a long um term facility plan to make sure that our facilities are well in in the climate and um efficient, and I will make sure that we have, we prioritize with our strategic plan, combining both, making sure that uh our teachers have a say in the planning of the upgrades a- and the in the learn-term facility plan. Because the teachers are the ones and the students who suffer through this um weathers. And I will say, i- again, it is not fun. And my vi- my vision, my mission um is for every student here in Plainfield Public Schools, no matter what school you're from, or what school do you go to, to learn in a modern and safe and welcoming environment. That includes having ACs in all classrooms. It is twenty twenty-five and we still do not have ACs in all classrooms. What is this? I will continue to advocate for that because our students and our teachers deserve the best. And certainly, I know many offices, administrative offices that do have nice ACs. We would love to have that in the classrooms and our teachers deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Can Ms. Henry, would you like to answer the question?
Yes, of course. First of all, we have, look, I too was a teacher in Plainfield High, at Plainfield High School. We didn't have air conditioning. We suffered the heat. Today, climate change is not like it was years ago. So we have, the district has already completed Maxim and Hubbard uh installing vent uh um unit ventilators. And the next step after that would be air conditioning. But we can't do them all at one time because we don't have the money. So in order to have vent uh unit ventilators, the first step we must have. And then the air conditions in every building, we must do a referendum. We do a hundred fifty-dollar referendum. We can get all the units. And we also need a new school. We can get a new middle school in also. And all we have to do is pay the sixty percent and the state will pay the forty percent. So and moving forward, that is what we need to do. In order, we need to increase, to get more unit ventilators in the school. Look at our long-range facilities plan. Right now, if we were to look at that plan, we would see that that is on the horizon to cover all the schools.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Gray?
So I'm on the Finance and Operations Committee and when my role in the Finance and Operations Committee has been that voice of reason, sort of advocating for the strategic plan. Cause the strategic plan, we talked about investing over eighty million dollars in our capital improvement projects. I believe we should stay steadfast to that goal in order to invest the money into our our capital projects. The big problem, however, is that the budget is a zero-sum game. And what do I mean by a budget being a zero-sum game? Well, if you're spending money in one area, you're not spending money in another area, right? And we got thirty-two million dollars in American Rescue Plan funds over the last four years. Where's the accounting of it? Where did the money go? Did it go to student achievement? Did it go to capital improvement projects? We don't know because that wasn't presented in the budget, right? And that was difficult. It was convoluted. We couldn't understand it. And at the end of the day, I voted no. Unlike other commissioners who voted yes for the thirty-six percent increases, I voted no. Not because I felt as though our kids didn't deserve it. I felt like it wasn't discussed in a democratic procedural fashion in our Finance and Operations Committee. And you couldn't get buy-in from key stakeholders in order to advocate for a tax increase of that amount. I had been asking for, to my Finance and Operations Committee, been asking for bonding out for our capital gains pro- or not capital gains, for our capital improvement projects. I don't even know they know what bond is. Uh they thought I was talking about James Bond. They was, they thought I was talking about Wörther's Bond, but they, they did not know what I was talking about. And that's because you have individuals who are not very much trained and understanding how to properly navigate the financial dynamics of a school district. So when you're borrowing so much from your budget, eventually you're gonna wanna go in your savings. And that was the conversation we were having. Right? We can't go into our savings. No reserve accounts.
You have reached.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Um, Ms. Alan Jordan?
Okay, our facility, a facility should reflect um the level of excellence we expect from our students and staff. I envision a long-term facility plan that prioritized in safety, modernization, as well as energy efficiency. This includes upgrading the HVAC systems to ensure comfortable learning environments year-round, improving accessibility and incorporating technology for these spaces that support the twenty-first century learning. Excuse me. I also believe in transparent reporting so families and taxpayers can see where dollars are going and how improvements are being made over the time. I too sat in the Plainfield School System from elementary school, middle school to high school. I sat in the heated classrooms. Um, I was there. I was able to get my education. It's, I understand that times have changed, the climate control, we try, we're working on it. We need to work harder. I understand that. We really need to work harder with our buildings. We really have land on, I do, I do believe we have a piece of land that we should be able to build a new school on, one more building. It's just getting funding for it. So that should be introduced into the budget. We need a new building, one more building. Um, uh, middle schools are overcrowded, popping at the seams. We really do need one more building. So that's what I would advocate for. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, Ms. Douglas, if you'd like to answer the question?
So being a teacher, I also know that when classrooms are too hot, too cold, or in poor conditions, it affects students' focus and teachers' morale. My vision is to create a safe, clean, modern learning environment that promotes pride and productivity. So I feel like the schools should reflect the money that is received for the budget. This means prioritizing HVAC upgrades, improving air quality, and investing in energy-efficient systems that reduce long-term costs. We also need a clear facility plan that includes teachers and parents' input. So addressing birth, both urgent repairs and long-term improvement transparency, transparently.
Thank you so much. And last but not least, Ms. Campbell?
So this is like a hot topic at Rutgers right now. We have this huge need for repairs across our buildings. And so working alongside my colleagues, which I would certainly do if I were elected, we need to come up with a plan that is actionable. And that includes putting all of the repairs on the list, prioritizing which ones need to be repaired first, and putting resources towards those. And it also means creating a deferred maintenance plan. I don't know if anybody knows what it is. I'll just give you a little bit. So that just simply means putting uh money and funding aside for small projects. So sort of like if a dishwasher breaks or something like in your house, you put a little bit of money aside so you can have something to repair them. That's what that means. So it's like investing in deferred maintenance plan, putting it clearly on the budget, having it allocated to these different sorts of areas they may need a repair, and then taking a long-term plan and looking at all of the repairs that needs to be done within the facilities across Plainfield. Um prioritizing them by number and then funding them, whether it's through the operating budget or getting sources from outside. I'm a big advocate about going out for donors and endowments and and grants. And we have an opportunity right now because funding is being cut. So I know Ms. Henry talked about the state, but we're not gonna get as much money from the state anymore. As a person who works at Rutgers right now, I can tell you our funding has been cut tremendously from the state. So we can't rely on state support. We gotta start thinking outside the box. If you, if you continue to think you're gonna rely on the state, we will lose all the time. So it's best to prioritize right now what we need, look for other sources outside, endowments and grants or other sources to help support our critical needs. And that, you know, everybody already talked about it. It seems like everybody had the same messaging, making sure we have a climate, making sure the uh rooms are safe. So I don't need to talk about that. But I will say, we need to be able to prioritize and show the public exactly where we're prioritizing our resources to make sure our students are safe, our teachers are safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next question is Ms. Jackson?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
The question is, how do you intend to support the improvement of NJSLA scores? Especially for our multilingual and special needs population. And I would like for Ms. Alan Jordan to go first, followed by Mr. Fuentes, then Ms. Henry, Ms. Campbell, Mr. Gray, then Ms. Douglas, and that way.
So improving uh academic performance begins with understanding the unique needs of each ste- each student. For multilingual learners and students with special needs, that means target support groups, expanding the bilingual education resources, strengthening individual education program, the IEP, compliance and support services, investing in ongoing professional development for teachers, for parents, for families. Um, encouraging family encour- engagement. Um, that is key. That's what the PTO. Um, you bring the PTO back in in the plan. Um, each school should have a PTO, like I said before. Uh, parents must be equipped with the correct stuff to support the learning at home. Influencing the Saturday Academy, bring that back with more parents coming out to Saturday. When I used to be the PTO president, I used to provide a babysitting service for the children, food for the children, and the parents had the time to learn on their own without the distractions of the children. I was that, I did that at Evergreen Elementary School where I was the PTO president for nine years, I do believe. Even after my children left the school, I still was the president. Um, so that's what I would do.
I believe I go next, right?
Ms. Jackson? Yes, you go ahead.
Well, um, as a special education student, um, I do understand. I have ADHD and taking this long test, um, assessments, um, sometimes uh take the breath out of me, um, especially uh when they are asked about all these things that we have to learn, that we had to learn, right? Uh, through the year. Um, so I will prioritize and and in investing in um early tutoring, um, after-school programs to make sure that our students are well-equipped in academics when in terms of uh early literacy, math, um, support. You know, I know a lot of students who, you know, unfortunately are not profi- uh proficiency proficient i- in math to make sure that we direct the resources towards those and support the students. If we, if we want a whole-child approach, that is one of the things that we have to do. ESL, ELA for our um multilingual students. You have to make sure that when they get in class, when they're get their class schedules, as I, by, as a former bilingual student, I gotta uh uh as an elective Spanish, but well, I I don't Spanish. I speak Spanish already. So why do I have to? Make sure that we include support for those students. Make sure in quote, in terms of English support, ELA support, ESL support. And that is one of the things that can get us to improving this test course um for our students. And I will say, we can't improve tests, test scores without improving the support nor the resources. But also supporting our teachers with uh resources for them more. I know a lot of people say more professional development. I think teachers are well-developed already. But I will say, um, including more um hands-on experience for our teachers, more in terms of development for our multilingual education and bilingual education. Thank you.
Uh, next, um, Ms. Henry? Would you like to answer the question? Ms. Henry?
Okay, I'm sorry. I was, the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment starts at third grade. Now, from K D three, you learn to read, and experts now have added fourth grade to that. If you can't read and do simple arithmetic facts by third grade, our students will be in trouble proceeding on. Years ago, we had reading specialists for K to sixth grade. We had math specialists for each grade. Our scores improved greatly. Students were able to read. Students were able to complete arithmetic facts. If in fact, Gloria Lanson Dillon states that culturally relevant pedagogy, if you learn about a student's background, a student's experiences, food, whatever makes that student, and you can build relationships with that student, you're able to academically have success with that student. Geneva Gay even went a little farther in two thousand. She said culturally responsive teaching. You, you must know about your students, whether they are multi-learners, whether they are multilingual, whether they have special needs, you must know about the students and meet them where they are. So you can take them where they need to go to be academically successful. Also, with the NJSLA, if we want to improve our we need professional, our teachers need professional training. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Campbell?
Um, so for me, it's like meeting the student where they are, and I struggle with that with um, with, with, with my sons. It's like, how do you meet them where they are to empower them to, to pass tests and empower teachers to support them? Um, I ponder on that a lot. So, um, but I do think individualized support, small group, um, instruction is important. I agree that we should have um early reading programs and math programs to support our students. Professional development is always a key, um, and effective tools to support the learner where they are. But equally important to me is um the executive functioning skills and emotional skills that helps students stay focused and manage frustration and build confidence as they're taking a test. Because I do feel when students feel supported and are capable, they're academically grow naturally, like organically, um. Uh, I do believe we can raise achievement by um helping support their, their focus and empowering students holistically, uh, by giving them the tools, the strategies they need to, to, to learn differently. And that includes empowering teachers to, to support them, to, to um help these students learn differently. Um, students don't learn the way we used to learn. They don't sit at desks the way we used to sit at desks. They don't sit and look at the board the way we used to. So we definitely have to meet the students where they are to help support NJSLA, but certainly giving them small group instructions and math and uh reading will certainly help raise our, raise the scores. And, and building the confidence and emotional intelligence to support them when they, when they don't know, be able to give the ability to say, I don't know, help, help me. And so those are also key areas where I, where I would help to strengthen the NJSLA tests.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Gray?
In order to improve NJSLA scores, we have to celebrate the test. We have to build a culture of understanding how to take tests. Like I'm a poor working-class kid from Urban Houston in Philadelphia, right? Uh, came to uh New Jersey in order to build my family here. Been here for the last fifteen years. It's important to understand that in order for students to do academically well, they need to, you need to model the behavior. So you need to have academic integrity. You can't plagiarize documents, for example, right? You gotta model the behavior you wanna see coming from the students. And that means understanding that we have to celebrate the test, we have to have a culture of excellence. Rigorous standards associated with studying. Uh, for every hour you spend in class, I learned that the formula was that you spend two hours outside of class studying. And that's how I became an academically inclined student. So I'm gonna echo some of the sentiments also. My fellow uh candidates that are running also said, uh, we support data-driven instruction, culturally responsive teaching. We span across uh after-school programs, which have the potential to be really impacted by these cuts. Um, and, and span after-school tutoring and include bilingual support as well. We must meet every child, of course, where they're at. Um, we have to focus on student uh, uh, groups, uh, I mean, parent engagement groups, for example, like CPAG. We redirected budgetary, I was responsible for redirecting budgetary resources to the Special Education Parent Advisory Group that was big in uh allowing parents to train the parents. So the trainers, uh, parents that are close to the action, being able to train other parents to, to, to take action in their child's curriculum. Also instrumental in making sure that also, um, there is a rapid rail services with different municipal agencies. So we're doing our part in order to make sure we're developing relationships with local governments.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gray. Last, Ms. Douglas?
So, improving scores starts with meeting the students where they are. For multilingual learners, that means investing in bilingual education, providing quality language development programs, and training teachers to integrate language supporters into all subjects. We could also do things like get the parents involved, put things in place, like having a homework, uh, um, a homework hotline so that the parents can call in for dual-linguals learner with a translator, so that they could be able to do their homework. And also provide tutoring services. For students with special needs, we need to ensure IEPs are being followed faithfully and that teachers have the resources and classroom aids to meet individual goals. Professional development, data-driven instruction, and strong collaboration between general and special education teachers are key to raising outcomes from, for every student. Ms. Keisha, I don't like the faces you're making while I'm reading. I think you're being rude. I feel like you're laughing while I'm reading. So, um, I would like for you to stop doing that. Yes, I'm talking to you.
I am well aware you're talking to me.
Okay, I just wanted you to know. I see you though. I'm, I'm looking at your face, you're rubbing your neck and you're laughing and it looks like
Talking to my child.
Every time I'm talking, I'm just telling you how it looks to me.
I understand. That I'm doing.
I just wanna remind everyone, this is public and being recorded. Let's uh have some decorum, please.
Thank you. Um, next, um, Ms. David, Ms. Lori, your last question?
We have come to the finish line, and this last question is a multitude of questions, but it's built around the same thing. It's about our parents and our families, so please listen. How can we better utilize communication tools to reach out to parents and families in the district? That's part one. How will you make our schools more welcoming to our parents? Three, how will you reach out to families who do not have the same language, computer savvy, and cultural understanding of the parent-school expectations that you have? You can go in whatever order feeds your passion for this one. Just let us know by either raising your hand, raising the hand on the link, or a thumb. But that's a lot, so I understand if you need time to um prepare your response. Anyone's free to go first. Don't everybody jump at the same time. But anyone can go first. This is the last question?
I'm just gonna look at and go down the list and see who is here. So, um, Ms. Allen Jordan, you can go ahead.
Thank you. Just excuse me. Um, we need a communication strategy um that meets families where they are. That includes improving translation services. When I was the PTO service, um, I'm sorry, PTO president, we had the headphones, and we had a translator at the PTO meetings. And we utilized that system, and we had more parents to come out. We had a, uh, we use at our meetings to engage our Spanish, um, parents, um, at the time. I'm sorry. Using text-based services, um, for all the families who have the, the means and the needs um, to answer text messages as well as email services. I know we had at one point the student portal, I don't know what it's called now. Um, maybe we should have parents access that more, be engaged with that more. Um, maybe we need to partner with churches, community organizations, more uh, more um hubs and different things for the parents to come involved. Have um nights at the school. We had uh movie nights. We have, we, just to bring them out, engage the parents. Um, you don't have to spend a lot of money to do this. All you need is audio, video, and that's it. You know, bring a movie, have some popcorn, have different businesses. When I was the PTO president, what we did, we had a local business sponsor, the PTO meeting, then during the week, the parents would go to that, organize, to that business and buy food for the week, or we did it for the teachers. The teachers would go support them for lunch. That was involving our communities, businesses, as well as bringing the teacher, um, parents out for involvement. So that's something that I would do. Um, again, I would like to just bring the PTOs back and up in the forefront. Because if you reach the PTO, the PTO are, they help out a lot with, um, with the parents and the teachers, talking with them all together, and then that come back to the board if we have a liaison. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have their hands up that would like to go next?
Can, can you repeat the question again, just so I'm answering it appropriately?
It's um, there are different parts to it. Go ahead, Lori.
The first part was, how can we better utilize communication tools to reach out to parents and families in the district? How will you make our schools more welcoming to our families? How will you reach out to families who do not have the same language, computer savvy, and cultural understanding of the parent-school expectations that you have?
Absolutely. So, show me your budget, I'll show you your priorities. And why I say that overwhelmingly, right, over and over again ad nauseam, is because the budget, you know, you can have all these great things you wanna do, right? If we're facing elimination of S2 funding, which is that we're not getting the same generous aid we got in previous years, um, we are going to have to figure out creative solutions. And this means joining with local organizations like the municipal government, Plainfield Municipal Government, join in with other organizations who have the, um, frankly, like the capital in order to invest in these programs and services. We already utilize Let's Talk. That is the communication mechanism that parents can report. We utilize Parents Square. I get regular notifications on Parents Square. I have to complete my daughter's um homeschool connection, right? And it just sent me a reminder. That is an excellent tool used to communicate uh to parents. And it also translates in Spanish. So, it is a wonderful tool that the superintendent, I work with the superintendent in order to uh initiate. Um, I think we could do a better job at integrating some of these systems. So making sure we have APIs, restful APIs, in order to ensure that there is uh, you know, these, uh, you know, no pun intended, but they're talking to each other. Um, all of these different uh programs that we have, Parents Square, making sure they're uh talking with each other. Now, in terms of the bilingual population, look, those who are closest to the action understand how to really relate culturally and linguistically to these uh populations of people that maybe the, 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 the school can't get, right? So I agree there should be someone internally, a translator, things of that sort. But we should rely, we should rely more on community organizations to do this work. Also, we have the Family Success Center. So we're doing a wonderful job when it comes to outreach. I think we can do a better job of coordination.
Um, next? Mr. Fuentes?
Thank you uh for that question. And um, the question is about family engagement and community engagement, right? I will support um more open houses and resources fair for our community to know what kind of programs we're offering at Plainfield Public Schools, what kind of um things we are um moving to improve on. Uh, that includes listening sessions with our Board of Education, our, our administrators at each schools, um, and invited our family. It's about having more collaboration, um, in, in terms of our, um, school district and, and their schools. Uh, but as well having more community engagement, two-way communications and outlines for our, our families. Um, I, I, I'm a huge supporter of Let's Talk and, and uh Parents Square. I, my brother is in the school district, he's a student, and we get constantly, constant messages. Uh, my mom, uh, in Spanish, she gets the, the messages in Spanish through Parents Square. But it's uh more of collaboration between the schools, to making sure that we are out there with our community. Um, br, uh, again, bringing the board in the school district closer to the community, closer to the people, that's where it belongs. And, and I am all for, I, I consume uh, my, um, information through social media. We need to have a social media presence out there. Currently, our social media presence is not in there, it's not even close to it. So I will, um, you know, more resources, uh, more resources fair, more open houses to promote our programs, promote our student work. And I think that's what is gonna get us that community engagement and that community and family engagement. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, we have Ms. Embry?
Unmute, please?
Ms. Embry, you're muted.
Okay. We have to make sure that every family feels that the schools belong to them. It's their extended family. We go back to the parent academies, the PTO, PTA organizations, where the parents are informed. They come, they're informed, they're informed of what's going on, what programs we have, after-school programs, whatever pertinent information needed. Training, parents need training. We could have trainings. And the great thing is that all the parents would come if you, if we have dinner. We have dinner, bring, they'll bring their families, everyone can eat, everyone can listen, everyone can learn. It is a great event, even if we have to bring pot, potluck dishes. Also, we have to go back to the old form of communications, paper, sending out paper, newsletters, letters, whatever is needed to inform the parents, because everyone is not computer savvy. So if we go back, they have a, a cellphone, text them, we, we can text. There are other methods of communication. Front office, when parents come in, have someone to welcome them, and I know we do that now, greet them, train the personnel. One thing I did want to say about, uh, go back to referendum, anyone knows about referendums? It, a referendum is where the state gives you forty percent of the funding. That is what a referendum is, is about. And the state will give you. It doesn't matter what the state, the status. The state will provide that forty percent, because that is a referendum, if you know civics. Um, to go back to every voice is heard, and that's what we wanna do, communicate, have translators. We do whatever it takes with the parents and the community and our students.
Thank you very much, Ms. Embry. Uh, Ms. Campbell?
You, thank you so much, Lee, thank you so much for um hosting this event. I appreciate you. Um, so for me, it has to go beyond flyers and emails. Um, we need to have, for me, it's like peer mentor. So at, at, uh, I do believe like peer mentor, like parent mentor. So basically, you know, you have a parent who's very engaged into the, the district. They are great with communication skills, they could bring along a new parent. Whoever comes in new to the district, they can bring them in uh, and make sure they are aware of all of the things that are happening in the district. Um, we can host family resource hubs, places where parents can go and uh get help with technology and translation and understanding of school expectations. But it's not just about those tools, it's about so much more, it's about tone. Family needs to feel like they're, they're genuinely valued and welcomed when they walk into the school. Um, parents need to feel like they're respected and included. Um, they need to become active partners in their child's education. And I think, um, every parent wants to be active in their child's education, and that doesn't mean having uh food situations to, to make them active. Parents genuinely wanna be active, and food shouldn't be one of the reasons. I do wanna um I do wanna um talk about something else about communication. If we use paper in communication, that's gonna blow your budget right away. After COVID, we saved millions of dollars by not using paper. So I would not recommend using flyers or papers. That doesn't work. Communication comes when you, when when parents feel welcoming and engaged with the teachers and the staff so that they can uh have better relationships. And that that includes, like I said, a peer mentor. You have a peer. Everybody has, does well when they have a peer. Um, we have them at work. We have um what we call like um sponsors. So I have a sponsor at work. Whenever I have issues or concerns, my sponsor is always keeping me informed of what's going on at at work. Strong communication builds strong communities, and that's the kind of district I wanna help lead. Thank you.
Okay, I lost my mouse for a minute. I'm sorry. Thank you. Welcome.
Families are partners in education, and communication must reflect that. We can do a better job by simplifying how we share information using translated text messages, phone calls, and in-person outreach instead of relying on emails and apps. Schools should be welcoming spaces where families feel comfortable visiting volunteers, volunteering and share and sharing feedback. Offering parent workshops in multiple languages and providing access to access to technology support can also help bridge communication gaps when families are informed and engaged. Student success follows.
Thank you so much. Um, thank you guys for coming. I think that's all the questions we have. Um, the forum will be um will be placed, um, will be sent out to all the members in the Plainfield community and in the PA. And um if you guys have any further questions, um, you can reach out to us through email. And we'll do the best we can. Yes, Mr. Fuentes?
Do we have a closing statement or no?
Um, you know what? Go ahead. You can have a closing. You'll do a closing statement. I'm so sorry. I didn't even think about it. Thank you. Um, we'll go, we can go to the call order. Yep, that would work. We'll drive it back back to order. So we'll start with Ms. Alan Jordan. Thank you, Mr. Fuentes.
Thank you, uh, PEA, um, for allowing us to talk with you tonight. Um, I appreciate it, and I hope you take my views into um heart. Um, a lot of things that comes to mind right now is a link for me. And I wanna apologize, but I wanna thank everyone for your timeout. And I am a great candidate for this position because of the fact that I would love to have the parent involvement back into our school system um and bring it to the board to make sure um that things get done as well. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you so much. Um, Mr. Fuentes, uh, Ms. Campbell, you're next.
Ms. Douglas? Okay, I'm walking. I'm sorry. Apologize. Thank you so much. So as a district, we face, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, so I'm sorry. So as a district, we face challenges from from tight budgets to aging buildings. But we also have so much opportunity. I'm running because I believe Plainfield's strength is its people, our students, our teachers, and our families. With my strong background in budgeting and resource management, I know how to stretch every dollar wisely so that our schools can survive. And we're gonna need that. This is a very challenging time right now. If you're not, if you're not looking at the news and seeing the executive orders and how how our resources are being diminished, please look at it. You need somebody in place that will help you manage a budget to make sure we focus our resources on the whole child and make sure every student feels they're supported and prepared for student success, not just for tests, but for everyday life. The emotional uh intelligence, the the strategies for communication. They need all of that. I wanna bring balance, transparency, accountability, and heart to every decision that we make as a board. Together, we can build our schools that reflects the pride that we are. So thank you for your time, and I'm asking you for your vote. My name is Robbie Campbell-Lassad, and I am part of One Board, One Future. I'm a proud part of One Board, One Future, Column Two. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Lassad. Um, next, I have Ms. Douglas.
So I was, I was asked, what would I do if I ever had a chance to be on a Plainfield Board of Education? And now here's my chance. I feel like once I'm on the board, I would be able to make sure that we have resources for the teachers, the children, and the parents, and that we can we can educate the whole child. These are the things that we need to do, because as we can see, our school system is failing us. It's failing the parents. It's failing the children, and it's failing the teachers. So we need to look at the budget. We need to look at the resources that we have in place, and we need to do what's right for Plainfield. So if you wanna see changes and you wanna see things take place on the board, vote for Column One, and let's make it happen.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Mr. Fuentes.
To the people of Plainfield, to the members of the Plainfield Education Association, I wanna thank you um for listening. But most importantly, it is important for you to elect board members who are not conflicted. Who you, for you to elect board members who will continue to prioritize student achievement in closing and bridging that gap between the uh the Board of Education, the administration, and the teachers. It is important for us to bring the board to the um to the people, closer to the people. That's where it belongs. It doesn't belong higher up. It doesn't belong i- in in the executive leadership team. It belongs to you, the teachers, and the people of this city. Uh, I am running because it is important for us to have a youth representation on the board, for us to have a Hispanic uh um representation on the board. And I am running because I am a former student and a proud student of Plainfield Public Schools. I am proud of the teachers that I have and I continue to have. And those teachers, thanks to those teachers, I'm here at i- in higher education or wherever I am. I am running because it is important. And as a former student commissioner, I saw the need for a board that listens to the people. That it is enough about the bureaucracy. It is enough about the the hiring agencies that they have. It is enough. It is enough. It is time to build a board that is stronger. So that is why I'm asking you to vote for Column Two if you wanna see real change, because we are the change. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, and um, Mr. Gray?
Yes, so my name is Azeem Gray. I'm signing off. Um, three years ago, you elected a father, right? This is my opening salvo from the last Legal Women Voters uh uh forum, uh was that you elected a father who had children who were within a school district um that uh needed special supports. Um, I became a a board commissioner who would act on behalf of every single child within the district. So personal story, uh, my wife and I, we wanted kids really, really badly. Uh, we have two young girls right now, but before we had three children that unfortunately passed away due to miscarriage. It spawned my wife's second career. Her second act was uh becoming a doula. Uh, my second act was sort of becoming a board commissioner advocating on behalf of all children. Because how I saw it is that while God took away three children, he gave me ten thousand in order to make sure I advocated for entritting and in the federal level and on the local level. So for me, it's absolutely very important to continue the work we began three years ago and to ensure that each child gets something guaranteed from them by the state constitution, which is a free, thorough, and appropriate education. And I look forward to making that happen with Column Two and my fellow other uh colleagues, Robbie Campbell-Lassad and also John Self-Fuentes. Column Two, we're non-conflicted. The other ones are conflicted, and they wanna make your property taxes go higher, right? We wanna make sure we're improving services for you to deliver on student achievement. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And last but not least, Ms. Embry.
You're muted, Ms. Embry.
It does it on its own. I have, I don't know anything but education. I've worked at education all my life. I've worked for children all my life. I see them now in the community when I'm canvassing as grown-ups. That's all I know. Work to see them to become successful. I invested my whole career, a wonderful, amazing journey, like I said before, in education. On the board side, I engage in decision-making for policies, support all the wonderful programs to support children, to support instructions, to support academic success. I'm out. My team and I are out every day canvassing. We're knocking on doors. We're nonpartisan. The opposing team is partisan, which is an ethics violation. They were supported by the Plainfield Democratic Committee. That is an ethics violation. And also, we have a member on the opposing team.
Not, it is against the law to say that. You do not say that.
File a lawsuit. It's public information. Who filed a lawsuit against the board.
You are not supposed to say that.
Thank you.
Ms. Embry, there's an NDA.
You are, it is an NDA on that. You are a sitting board member. You are acting unethically by announcing anything about any lawsuit.
Okay, we're not here for cross-talk, everybody?
Miss, you have to take that, miss, the um asking of me.
No, just let the publication get released. Just let the publication.
Please, please remove that. She is acting unethical by saying something that is not true. And I will not allow this woman to demean me and my character for something that I would do for anybody. Because I fight for my child, and I will fight for every child in this district with the same fever. I will not allow this woman to call me unethical when it is not true. And she is speaking about something that should never be spoken about. So anybody that wants to vote for her, she's the kind of person should not.
It is, it is public information.
Ms. Embry, we're not doing.
It is not public information, Ms. Embry.
It's, it's.
Shame on you.
You're muted, can you please?
Shame on you.
I understand, Ms. Campbell. I understand, Ms. Embry. We're all passionate about what we're trying to do.
This is empowerment through education.
However, as I stated before, it is not a debate, so please. And um, we just, we just want to put information out so our members can listen to what's going on and make an informed decision. So please.
Thank you.
Please.
Uh, I apologize for getting upset, but I am passionate about my child in the same way I'll be passionate about every other child.
That we understand.
It is, it is, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
We, we understand, Robbie.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
They're gonna show up election day to see what you see.
Azeem, thank you so much. Ms. Embry, we understand. All right, thank you guys so much for coming and answering our questions so that we can then give our members something to be well-informed about when they're making decision voting. All right? Everybody, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, everybody. Thank you. Have a good night.
You have a great night.
Hey, guys, have a good night.
Okay, thank you.
Good night.